Good afternoon. The sixty-first meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder for members of general public, the press, or any other visitors, we ask all folks to ensure that your electronic devices are turned on silence, if not off, to not get in the way of today's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by the Reverend Brent A. Brown, Senior Pastor at Greater Harvest Baptist Church. It is our pleasure to welcome you, Reverend Brown.
Shall we pray? God, how we thank you for this moment in time and for this day that you have created, have allowed us to gather together in this space as we come to convene business of this city. And God, we ask your blessings upon all of our endeavors. We pray, God, right now for the city of Baltimore, that you, God, continue to bless this city. We thank you for its leaders, and we pray, God, that as we all have gathered in this space, business would be done for the betterment of our city. We pray, God, that you continue to uplift this city in a positive way, in a better way, in a life-changing way. And we pray, God, that as you bless this city, you will continue to bless us collectively and individually. We pray for Baltimore in the north, south, east, and west. We pray, God, for our council president and all of our councilmen and women, everyone who has put forth the effort to bring change and better for the city. We pray, God, that you would allow our lights to shine, that someone else would see the good that we are attempting to do, and then in terms glorify you. We ask that you would bless our time shared together, and not just this meeting, but the meetings to come. Have it to be done in decency and order. Have it to be done that you would be pleased, and that we all would be enriched and made the better. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend Brown. Everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, for tonight's showcase, it is my pleasure to welcome Brianna Wolford, founder and CEO in MySkin. In MySkin is a nonprofit organization that provides personal development programs for youth, including mentorship, workshops, community engagement that build social, emotional learning with the goal of empowering youth to embrace their unique qualities in order to achieve their full potential. At this time, I welcome you, Ms. Wolford.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the City Council and esteemed guests. Thank you for this incredible opportunity to share the vision and mission of In MySkin with you today. My name is Brianna Wolford, and I am the founder of In MySkin, a nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering the kids of Baltimore by providing the tools and support they need to cultivate their own identity and achieve their goals. We believe every child deserves a safe space and a nurturing environment to discover their strengths, overcome challenges, and achieve their goals. Our mission is to inspire a lifelong love of learning and self-improvement in every child we serve. As you know, Baltimore is a city filled with diverse communities, each with its own unique identity and challenges. At In MySkin, we believe that by nurturing emotional intelligence and self-awareness among our youth, we can create a more connected and harmonious city. Our emotional intelligence program is just one of the many initiatives we plan to implement in our organization for Baltimore. Through this program, we aim to equip children between the ages of five and eighteen with essential life skills, including self-awareness, emotional regulation, empathy, and positive relationship building. In MySkin is proud to align with the initiatives set forth by the Baltimore City Council members. Our organization shares their vision for empowering and uplifting the youth in our community. We understand the importance of providing safe spaces and personal development opportunities for children to explore their identities, build confidence, and develop essential life skills. By offering programs and services, we contribute to council members' goals of fostering inclusive and supportive environments for our youth. Through mentorship, workshops, and community engagement, we promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our emphasis on self-confidence, self-awareness, and self-worth aligns with the councilman's commitment to empowering children and creating a brighter future for Baltimore. In MySkin actively collaborates with local schools, community organizations, and youth centers to amplify and impact our programs. We are dedicated to working hand-in-hand with the council members to address the challenges faced by our youth and provide them with the tools they need to thrive. By aligning our efforts with council's initiatives, we strive to make a positive and lasting difference in the lives of the children and their families in Baltimore. In MySkin's emotional intelligence program is already making a positive impact on the children of Baltimore, particularly at Councilwoman Ramos's own Village Learning Place. This is a testimony from TK McDonald, the Youth Program Director at Village Learning Place. She says, "In MySkin is an amazing organization dedicated to the social, emotional well-being of students of all ages. They create developmentally appropriate lesson plans. In every class, the students report loving the activities and the information. The partnership was flawless, and we plan to have them return for more programming. Students learn virtues, affirmations, and emotions to help build their emotional intelligence. They are always well-prepared for the day and always report being on time. They are reliable and resourceful. By investing in our youth's emotional well-being and self-awareness, we can cultivate a generation of resilient, empathetic, and confident individuals who will shape the future of our city. I invite each of you to support our cause, and together, let's build a stronger, more vibrant Baltimore where every child feels seen, heard, and valued for who they are. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you so much, Ms. Wolford. Do you have a website, Instagram account that you would like the city to know about?
Um, sorry. Yes, so if you would like to, more information, you can contact me at brianna@inmyskn.co. My phone number is four four three nine zero four four seven one eight, and you can also check out our website, which is www.inmyskn.co. And all the social medias is in my S-K-N because In MySkin wasn't available, so thank you.
Thank you so much. We truly, truly appreciate you. Tonight, we also would like to honor and recognize a special group of Baltimore City young folks. You know, it's not often that we hear about on the news the positivity in our community of our young folks, and the council likes to always highlight that. So with that, hailing from the program developed by our first-place Orioles, give it up for the Orioles. Seventy-seven wins right now. I would like to acknowledge our special guest and ask him to join us. We're going to go right in front up here, from the Northwood Baseball League. Please welcome the two thousand and twenty-three Orioles Junior RBI Twelve-and-Under Champions. So before, before we take the picture, I'm going to allow their amazing coach, Mr. Marquis Dent, to just talk about what the RBI program is and what the collection of the young folks that are standing before us was able to accomplish.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, we'd another round of applause for these amazing children. Myself along with Sergeant Hardy, who volunteers his time in the distance of keeping us safe up in the Northeast. We've been coaching these gentlemen the entire year since January. They work every single day, not only on the field but in the classroom. They are true student athletes. We appreciate everything that the Orioles and the RBI program provides to these young people each and every day, and it's more than just baseball. They've visited the Negro League Museum as well. They've done Women History Month events. They've done so much in and around the city, more than just throw a ball. But when they go out on that field, they perform at the highest level. They have since moved on as a travel team as well. They've performed in six different states since January, and they'll be actually going to North Carolina on the first of September in a Labor Day tournament. Ultimately, we want to make sure we keep exposing our young people to all these different opportunities. And again, the Orioles, the RBI program, Giant and Nike, make sure that these opportunities are available to them, and we just thank them so much, and we look forward to seeing these young people in the future continue to do great things. We thank our entire City Council and our council president for showcasing them today, and it is truly an honor to celebrate these young people. Thank you so much.
And the council looks forward to coming out and seeing all the work for the redevelopment of the Northwood baseball fields that the city helped in supportive through the state. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will proceed with adoption of the journals. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the Journal for the July seventeen, twenty twenty-three, five p.m. meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the Journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda today. At this time, Madam Clerk, please go into executive nominations.
EA two-three dash zero two zero eight, Nancy F. Aiken, Ph.D., Member, Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight.
EA two-three-
Excuse me, one second. Could you shut the door? Excuse me, could you shut the door? Thank you. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
EA two-three dash zero two zero nine, James W. Wallace, Fire Chief, Baltimore City Fire Department.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. I would like to, before we go into bills, introduce, talk about the introduction of a new committee on the City Council. It's called the Finance and Performance Committee. The committee members have been communicated with at this point. We know that the city of Baltimore and its voters gave this council a huge discretion as it relates to new budgetary authority. It's the first time that this council in a hundred and twenty-five years has had the ability to not only cut from the budget provided by the administration, but also redirect spending. And with that process, we took that authority very seriously, and we looked around to sister cities all across the country to determine what deficiencies we currently have and to put us in the best posture to deliver the best-in-class services for the citizens of Baltimore as it relates to this new authority. One of the things that we implemented very early on, if you could remember in the last budget process, was a revenue certification process. That's something that is critical and must continue, but we also identified other key issues that we would like to continue to work with the Finance Department and the administration with on an ongoing basis. In the past, you know, the councils literally had the budget for about forty days, and that was kind of the budget. It started at day one and ended at day forty, and we kind of moved on into the next budget round. This council is turning this budget into not only a forty-day process, but more importantly, a fifty-two-week process, and this committee is going to be at the forefront of doing that. So as it relates to looking over and dealing with and addressing our Finance Department on a quarterly basis, to compare the actuals to the projections that were built in that fiscal year's budget, to calling in agencies as it relates to finance and performance, to reviewing the CAFRA, to reviewing the biennial audits, to ensuring that we have a standard process with revenue verification, as well as supplementary items that's pushed over by the administration. This body will be the main fiscal body of the City Council to assure that we're more prepared when going into the budget process. There'll be other announcements coming out associated not only with this committee, but more importantly, the structure around the budget. The committee in charge of the budget is still ways and means. However, this committee will be doing its due diligence throughout the year to ensure from a fiscal and performance perspective, we are delivering the best-in-class representation and oversight that the City Council should provide. With that, Madam Clerk, please read the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four one three, the Solid Waste Management Plan for Baltimore, repeal and replace. For the purpose of repealing the solid waste management plan for two thousand thirteen through two thousand twenty-three that was adopted by Resolution one-four dash zero one nine, effective October thirty of two thousand fourteen, as amended by Resolution one-five dash zero two five, effective December eighteen, two thousand fifteen, adopting the solid waste management plan for two thousand twenty-four through two thousand thirty-three, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the solid waste management plan for Baltimore City, sponsor Administration.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four one four, Property Tax Credit Reform Work Group, for the purpose of forming an interdepartmental work group, including broad representation for stakeholders outside Baltimore City Government to study and make recommendations for reforms to the city's property tax credit system. Sponsor Bullock.
At this time, I'd like to recognize sponsored bill. Chairman Bullock?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. As you know, the property tax credit system is something that does need some work in our city. I've come before you on a couple of occasions, one in terms of the solar panel tax credit, also in terms of extending the CHAP tax credit. But I think it's really incumbent upon us to look at this from a comprehensive point of view, and also look at this as it relates to equity in our city. And so this looks like an opportune time for us to do a deeper dive in terms of understanding the property tax credits and how to right-size them and also to apply them in the most appropriate way. So again, look for your support on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I ask the Executive Secretary to put me down as a co-sponsor. This bill has been assigned to Finance and Performance Committee. Oh, I'm sorry. I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Torrance, Chairman Conway, Vice President Middleton, Chairman Stokes. Thank you. This bill, Chairman Costello, Councilman Burnett. This bill has been assigned to Finance and Performance Committee. It's the first bill in this committee, so Chairman Bullock, we look forward to your leadership and look forward to working with you. Madam Clerk, please read in the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four one five, Community Relations Commission, Powers and Duties Complaint Period, for the purpose of increasing the time within which complaints of unlawful practices must be filed with the Community Relations Commission, making certain related amendments, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Porter Administration.
The body would like to call on sponsored bill. Councilwoman Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This is an opportunity and an amendment to change the original time within which complaints of employment, housing discrimination, and public accommodation related to discrimination must be filed with the EEOC from a hundred and eighty days to three hundred days. And so currently, the state provides a complaint in one year to file a housing discrimination complaint, and also the state gives six months to file a public accommodations complaint. And so this provides an extended period of time for the Office of Civil Rights and Equity to file as many complaints related to discrimination as possible on behalf of the citizens of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, this bill has been assigned to Education, Workforce, Workforce and Youth Committee. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in four sixteen.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four one six, Baltimore City Office of Returning Citizens, for the purpose of establishing a Baltimore City Office of Returning Citizens, defining certain terms, providing for the appointment of the Director of the Office, establishing the duties of the Office, providing for the staff and budget of the Office, establishing the Reentry Action Council to advise and collaborate with the Office, providing for the appointment structure and governance of the Council, requiring the Director Council Members and staff of the Office to file financial disclosures under the Ethics Code, and requiring that the Office submit an annual report to the Mayor and City Council. Sponsor Torrance.
Before we go into Torrance, Madam Executive Secretary, please add me on as a co-sponsor. I think we also have Chairman Schleifer, we have Chairman Bullock, Councilmember Burnett, Vice President Middleton, Chairman Stokes, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, and Councilman Cohen. At this time, the floor, we yield it to you, gentlemen from the Seventh District.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I rise as a son of returning citizens in Baltimore City. This is near and dear to me as I think about my mother, who was Pamela Masner, who slept on my grandmother's couch because her felony prevented her from actually having housing. I remember her going at night to become a cosmetologist because she didn't have childcare, also because of her felony, also the fact because she didn't have a high school diploma, she was only relegated to having a career that did not have family sustaining wages. This office is an opportunity for us to coordinate services within city government to make sure our residents can re-enter into society, but also esteem them as human beings. And I fundamentally believe as a Christian person that there is true second chances, and this is an opportunity for our community and our society to say, we believe in second chances, and we want to level the playing field for you. Also, offices like this have been created in DC and Boston, and they led to their violence reduction in black neighborhoods, black and brown communities that were pillaged because of the criminal justice system and the war on drugs. This is an opportunity to correct failed policies, but also allow us an opportunity to do two things. Make sure that, one thing that we know about Baltimore, it thrives when black communities thrive, and I speak on behalf of the residents of the Seventh District, who receive the majority of the returning citizens in Baltimore City, that my residents deserve a second chance. They deserve its punishment. They deserve housing, transportation, education, and resources that matter, and this work has started long beforehand. Case in point, this is allowing us an opportunity to solidify work that's already happened. Right now, there are men and women who are returning back to Baltimore in the next eighteen months. They will have a safe reentry plan that's crafted with the city of Baltimore and the state resources. They will allow us to know, one, do they have housing? Do they have an education system? We're going to allow them to be connected with those resources before they touch the ground in Baltimore City. This is an opportunity to make sure that we are doing right by community violence interruption, but also meeting people where their needs are before they hit our streets. So with this, colleagues, I rise to say that as a son of returning citizens, a son of Baltimore, this is the right thing to do, and I thank you for your co-sponsorship.
Thank you so much, Councilman Torrance. Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry. That bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four one seven, rezoning four nine one one through four nine one seven and four nine one nine through four nine two five, West Forest Park Avenue, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as four nine one one through four nine one seven, West Forest Park Avenue, and four nine one nine through four nine two five, West Forest Park Avenue, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque for the R-one zoning district to the OS zoning district. Sponsor Burnett.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four one eight, Tobacco Products, Tobacco Product Use in Stadiums Prohibition, for the purpose of prohibiting the use of tobacco products in stadiums, defining certain terms, establishing certain penalties, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors Burnett, Porter, Dorsey, Middleton, Ramos, Bullock, Cohen, Torrance.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsored bill. Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So this bill is a step in joining several other jurisdictions and leading in public health. Smoking and tobacco products is, you know, we all know is a problem, particularly for young people, young adults, who look up for athletes. And so this bill bans the use of tobacco, smokeless tobacco products in stadiums and in sporting venues across the city of Baltimore. And talking through this bill with one of my constituents, he noted to me that as a youth baseball player, he started chewing tobacco after seeing somebody in the Yankees doing the same on television and thought that that was a behavior he wanted to emulate. And we understand how young people emulate us every day. You know, I have a toddler that follows my every move and tries to do everything that I'm doing, and, you know, being that good example is important. So many people look up to athletes, whether they're our young people who are champions at Northwood or our first-place Orioles. That thing matters. Representation matters, and seeing good behavior is a big deal. And so I thought this was important, working with a broad coalition of folks in the public health field to push this and join sixteen other municipalities in taking this important step to take tobacco products out of sporting venues in the city of Baltimore. So thank you for all the support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four one nine, Study and Report, North Franklin Town Road, for the purpose of requiring that the Department of Public Works submit a report to the Mayor and City Council evaluating the effectiveness of closing the portion of North Franklin Town Road extending through Leakland Park to deter illegal dumping, specifying the contents of the report, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Burnett.
The body would like to recognize sponsored bill. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I had a constituent who described this corridor as the corridor of crimes. We understand, you know, for me, it was hurtful to hear, but when you think about the legacy of Lincoln Park, Quins Falls Park, from a violence perspective, illegal dumping, a lot of vehicle accidents, more importantly, it's the second-largest urban park in the country, and it's a gem that we should be looking at better ways to preserve. And so this particular corridor is one that I've had a lot of conversations about, whether it's illegal dumping or violent crime occurring, but more importantly, people wanting to reclaim that green space and make it a space that young people can walk through, jog, and, you know, enjoy that wilderness park that we have in the middle of our city. And so this is a study report to explore the impact of a closure. Obviously, there's a lot, when we talk about closing a roadway, whether it's in a park or anywhere else, there's going to be unintended consequences and impacts that we'd like to try and get ahead of. And so I told my constituents that we take this first step to look at what the impact would be on this corridor and on the park before taking any further steps. So it's just that first step. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your leadership on this effort. To the Executive Secretary, please put me down as a co-sponsor to this bill. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Next up, Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four two zero, Residential Permit Parking Program Area, Brunt Street Area, for the purpose of establishing a new statutory residential permit parking area for the Brunt Street Area. Sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk?
City-
Four two one. I'm sorry, you'd like to speak on behalf? I'm so sorry, Madam Clerk. The body would like to recognize sponsored bill. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an opportunity for us working with the George Heights community as we're trying to do environmental design for public safety. We have seen a large consortium of illegal activity happening in this area. In a way to help out with the Western District in terms of their violence prevention, as well as their enforcement, we are asking for permit parking along the Brunt Street Quarter in conjunction with the policies and implementation of things that we're doing in Penn North area. With that, I yield back to the President.
Thank you so much for your leadership on this issue. Madam Clerk, this bill will be assigned to Economic Community Development. If you could go into four two one, please.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero four two one, Public Service Agencies, Gas Metering and Regulation Equipment Required Permits, for the purpose of requiring certain public service agencies to obtain a certain permit before installing gas metering or regulating equipment on certain real property, specifying documents to be submitted with a permit application, requiring a public service agency to obtain a property owner's consent before a certain permit can be issued, establishing certain exceptions for these requirements, and generally relating to the public utilities and permits to install gas metering and regulation equipment. Sponsors Costello, President Mosby, Middleton, Stokes, Torrance, Conway.
The floor would like to recognize Chairman Costello, sponsor this bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate my co-sponsor's support and appreciate your leadership on this issue, Mr. President. This bill would ban the installation of external gas regulators on any property structure in the city with five or less dwelling units so as to not conflict with the Flower Branch Act passed by the General Assembly in two thousand twenty-one. We have heard the concerns from neighborhoods across our entire city, not just historic neighborhoods, but all neighborhoods, and it has been our position that BG has not provided appropriate justification as to why external regulators are necessary from a safety perspective. The hope was that the PSC would take appropriate action on this issue. There was a hearing, I believe, last week, and the PSC has not been definitive in the action that they have taken, so the City Council is prepared to move forward. I will note that in preparation- I will note that in preparation for the introduction of this bill, we worked very closely with our partners at the Law Department, as well as the city's Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Commission for Historic and Architectural Preservation. The Law Department is prepared to approve this bill as drafted for form and legal sufficiency and is confident in the legal structure of the bill. Look forward to having a public conversation with all of our colleagues, hearing from the public, and moving forward on this once a hearing date is announced. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your leadership. I see the hand raised as additional co-sponsors of Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover. Yes, and this has been assigned to Health and Environment and Technology Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0422, public nuisances modifications. For the purpose of requiring certain people be notified of a hearing regarding a public nuisance, removing prostitution from the definition of public notice, altering certain penalties, and generally relating to abating public nuisance premises. Sponsors Burnett, Ramos, Porter.
At this time, the floor would like to recognize sponsored bill, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to my colleagues at introduction, co-sponsoring introduction. So we all across the city deal with nuisance properties, whether those are corner stores or residential properties that, you know, whether it's, you know, drug dealing, loitering, violent crime, and it is incredibly difficult to close these businesses. And more importantly, the process in which folks go through the nuisance abatement conversation with the police department, those conversations are often behind closed doors without any real public input or input from the council. And so we're basically proposing to make some modifications to the already existing nuisance law to make it more transparent, engaging the council office, engaging the community, to better hold problematic businesses, problematic properties accountable for their actions that are devastating to communities, and giving the community a greater voice in that process to express their concerns and their feedback about what they're experiencing. Because often these stores, you know, it's year after year, the same locations, and it is incredibly difficult to hold them accountable. And so this is a step in, we hope, in the right direction to do a better job as a city is doing so. So thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you for your leadership on this issue. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, 423.
City Council Bill 23-0423, city property renaming Cottage Avenue Park to Candy Stripe Park for the purpose of changing the name of Cottage Avenue Park located at northeast side, thirty-foot alley, second southwest of Cottage Avenue Rear, three, thirty-seven-hundred through thirty-six Cottage Avenue, block three-three-three-five, lot zero-six-seven to Candy Stripe Park. Sponsor Middleton.
At this time, on the floor, we'd like to recognize Vice President of the City Council, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one renaming that I am just really proud to introduce. I know that we all periodically are going through renaming of parks and green space through, throughout our city, and this particular park is a park that, and the naming involves our youth. And just for a location, this particular park is in Park Circle. And if you're leaving Drew Hill Park and heading to Park Circle, it's the area that's concentrated on the right, and you'll enter it through Cottage Avenue. It's been known as Cottage Avenue Park for a very long time, but the residents that live in that neighborhood, the homeowners who, where their back area faces this park is where they have been doing gatherings of different sorts for different reasons for way over forty years. As a matter of fact, we have a matriarch of a homeowner of that area that has been in the area for over fifty years that approached me one day, and I'd like her to stand, Ms. Smith. This is Ms. Smith that has been a homeowner in that area for fifty years, matriarch of her family, grandmother of younger Smith that was unfortunately slain in that drive-by shooting that happened on Shirley Avenue. She has just been really wonderful and just working and helping with the youth of that area. There's other people that live in that block that are retired Baltimore City employees from social services and so on, and they, that's just an example of how they use that park and work with the youth to really make that green space very special. And they're changing, they want to change the name to Candy Stripe Park because of these red and white metal, I guess, poles that are there, yes, safety poles that are there. And you know how young people, they, that's what they identify that park as, Candy Stripe Park. So as Parkites is going through its massive renovation and really trying to bring unity with the homeowners there and working with our youth, of course, we're getting that wonderful library that's going to be taking place, there's houses that are coming up. This is a good ti- and that park is going to be renovated in our next fiscal year. So we want to have everything in preparation, and this is the time to make that name change and make it a meaningful area for our older adults and our youth. And just so proud to have one of the matriarchs that took her time to come here to actually watch me present this because they're like, is this really going to happen? So I wanted to prove to her that yes, this is going to happen. So we can't wait to schedule that hearing so we can move that forward and hold Baltimore City wrecking parks to their word that that park is going to be renovated in our next fiscal year. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for joining us this evening. Madam Executive Secretary, if you could please include me as a co-sponsor on this. This bill has been assigned to ECD. All of us had a special day in our life. It was our first day of school. Well, we want to send off our amazing clerk, amazing member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, graduate of the University of Maryland College Park, graduate of the Baltimore Polytechnic and Baltimore City born and bred, off to law school for her first day today. So give it up for Taylor Smith. She's going to run out of here before she starts crying, but she was up here nervous because this is her first day of law school, and we can't wait for Taylor to continue to be amazing. So congratulations, Taylor. Again, that bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, our next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0424, unfair, abusive, or deceptive trade practices penalties. For the purpose of prohibiting unfair, abusive, or deceptive trade practices, establishing certain penalties, authorizing the city solicitor to take certain action if there is a reason to believe a person is engaging in certain practices, defining certain terms, and generally relating to penalties for unfair, abusive, or deceptive trade practices. Sponsor Schleifer.
This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Before we go into resolutions to be introduced, I would like to recognize, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize, former president of the Baltimore City Council, Mr. Bell. Please, President Bell, please stand up. And former delegate from the Maryland General Assembly, I serve with her, that's the delegate, Cheryl Glenn, please stand up. I believe both of you are here for the Gwynss Falls Bike Trail. So all members from the Gwynss Falls Bike Trail that joined us today, that is sharing their concerns with the city council, you can please stand up at this time. Any folks, all right, thank you for coming out and civically being engaged with us. Thank you so much. And then, go ahead. And then, last but not least, any folks that were out as relates to the inclusionary housing that would like the city council to understand and know, please stand up. It's time to be recognized. We thank your participation in the city council meeting today. Thank you so much for your civic engagement. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0184, honoring the medical staff of MedStar Harbor Hospital and the R. Adams Cowley Shock Trauma Center for the purpose of formally recognizing the heroic work of the medical staff at MedStar Harbor Hospital and the R. Adams Cowley Shock Trauma Center at the University of Maryland Medical Center in response to the mass shooting at Brooklyn Homes on July 2nd, 2023. Sponsors Stokes and Porter.
At this time, the floor would like to recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I suspend the rules for immediate adoption, I think the city and the state should honor those medical staff at MedStar and Shock Trauma for their overwhelming surprise at the mass shooting at Brooklyn Homes. We have, we have some of the best hospitals in the city, and it just shows the leadership, not just the nurses and the doctors, but the support staff, because it was unfortunate that two people passed away. It could have been more, but when you have some of the best hospitals in the country, that's the result of having those best hospitals in this country.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Felicia Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Similar to my colleague, I just want to thank the frontline workers at Shock Trauma and MedStar Harbor. Sorry. There are multiple opportunities for our frontline workers, and they've been experiencing such a, such a heroic response, not only to the mass shooting at Brooklyn Homes, but all during the healthcare pandemic that we just experienced. So this is an opportunity for the city of Baltimore to celebrate them, to applaud them for their heroic efforts, and to also, just to remind people that our frontline workers and our emergency departments, not only are they some of the most overworked and underpaid, but they are some of the most caring people here in the city of Baltimore, and this is an opportunity for us as a body to celebrate them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll turn it back over to you, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, our rules are suspended. Chairman Stokes?
I move the resolution be adopted.
At this time, we're going to go for immediate adoption of this resolution. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the robe.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This motion is approved, the resolution has been adopted. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0185R, reproductive options for everyone. For the purpose of calling on all units of city government receiving city funds to safeguard an individual's right to abortion care by, unless otherwise required by Maryland or federal law, refraining from using city funds to store, catalog, provide, monitor, or collect certain information that could be used to retaliate against an individual seeking abortion care. Sponsor Porter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's time, the body would like to recognize sponsored bill, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. This resolution is a companion resolution to the abortion and reproductive fund that Councilman Cohen and I set up a few months ago, and this just provides an opportunity for legislation to actually make it illegal, to make it illegal to use any city funds to prosecute any woman or person that is going to utilize reproductive services in the city of Baltimore. This is a safeguard, while abortion care is, you know, not hindered in the state of Maryland, this is an opportunity for us to protect our neighbors and other jurisdictions if their law enforcement professionals come into the, come into the city of Baltimore. And so this is an opportunity for us to safeguard and truly protect those seeking not only abortion care, but reproductive services and rights as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. At this time, I see a hand raised of Councilman, Councilwoman Ramos, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Chairman Conway, Councilman Burnett, Chairwoman McCray, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, Chairman Stokes, Councilman Glover. Did I see any additional hands? Executive, to the Executive Secretary, if you could please include me as a co-sponsor as well. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, Technology Committee? Did I miss someone?
Torrance.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Torrance as well. So, Madam Austin, please put down Councilman Torrance as well. Again, this has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology. Madam Clerk, the next resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0186R, informational hearing examining the state of Baltimore's middle neighborhoods. For the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Director of the Department of Planning, the Director of the Department of Transportation, the Director of the Department of Public Works, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the City Administrator, and other interested parties to appear before the city council to discuss, one, the systemic disinvestment of Baltimore's middle neighborhoods and its connection to the decline in Baltimore's population of working and middle-class families; two, ongoing efforts to revitalize these neighborhoods; three, future strategies to invest in these neighborhoods; and four, present challenges to reversing current trends and restoring these once-stable communities. Sponsor McCray.
Thank you. The floor would like to yield to sponsored bill, Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Define as neighborhoods that are not unduly distressed yet are not the most affluent middle neighborhoods have historically been the stabilizing force in Baltimore. Communities like Frankfurt, the largest community in Baltimore City, Sedonia, and those along the Bel Air Road Corridor have been the crux of our tax base in legacy homeowners. Between 2000 and 2017, predominantly black, middle-income neighborhoods attributed to over seventy percent of the black population decline and over fifty percent of all population loss. Middle neighborhood population decline can be also attributed to numerous factors, including, but not limited to, a lack of capital investment, a lack of economic opportunities, a lack of code enforcement, a lack of youth and family programming, and a lack, and a lack of an array of necessary resources. And let's not forget, a continued lack of communication and engagement to residents and stakeholders from relevant agencies. The severe disinvestment in these communities has had a direct impact on our local economy, relentless outmigration, standard of living for current residents, and future opportunities for our families to create generational wealth. As our longstanding residents migrate into the surrounding counties and out of state, and let me be clear, these are our black residents who are migrating to surrounding counties and out of state. Baltimore is losing the value of their presence. We have always relied on our working in middle class to sustain our economy and our municipal operations, and despite their substantial contributions to our city, these legacy homeowners are now struggling to maintain and live in their homes after retirement due to a lack of assistance. It has never been more imperative that we generate actionable plans and overturn current trends in order to preserve our neighborhoods, provide for our residents, and protect our overall economy. I look forward to a healthy conversation and immediate actionable items from our city agencies. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I ask our Executive Secretary to include me as a co-sponsor. I see the hand raised of Chairman Burnett, Chairman Conway, Vice President Middleton, Chairman Schleifer, Chairman Stokes, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Torrance, as well as, did I get everyone? All right, I got everyone, right? I just said Burnett? Councilman Burnett?
No, you did. Bullock. Bullock, you got to say Bullock. Chair Bullock.
I thought I said Chair Bullock. Chairman Bullock, as well as Councilman, Chairman Costello. That bill has been assigned to Health and Environment and Technology Committee. That's the committee of the day, I guess. Before we go on, if I could go back to Resolution 23-0185R, I want to read in the record that Councilman, Chairman Costello would like to be included as a co-sponsor. Again, to Madam Natwana, 23-0185R, please add Chairman Costello as a co-sponsor. With that, we're going to go into the consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda is their motion to- the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill in ECD.
City Council Bill 23-0388, Urban Renewal, Lauraville Business District, Amendment One.
Before, we'd like to recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 23-0412 was heard on August 21, 2023, and before we do the motion, I'd like to yield to the Councilman sponsor of the 7th District.
I'm not doing that one.
So, Lauraville? We're doing 23-388, Urban Renewal, Lauraville Business District?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun. That's afterwards. So, Bill number 23-0388, Urban Renewal, the Lauraville Business District Amendment One. This bill was heard on August 1, 2021. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill moves favorable. Madam Clerk, sorry, and it'll be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0412, City Property Renaming Playground at Hanlon Park After Ruby K Couch.
The body would like to recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now, this is the correct one. Bill number 23-0412. This bill was heard on August 21, 2023. That was earlier today, and I want to yield to Councilmen of the 7th District, the sponsor of the bill.
Councilman Torrance, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise in support of this bill and authoring it on behalf of Ruby K Couch's family, as well as the Hanlon Improvement Association. Mrs. Couch was a matriarch of the community, also one of the founding members of the Hanlon Improvement Association. She often served as a civic leader in West Baltimore with icons such as Victor Ray Adams. So I proudly ask for your humble votes to approve this, as we will honor Mrs. Couch on her 100th birthday on August 27 this weekend. Thank you so much, and I yield back to Madam Chair.
Thank you. Floor would like to recognize Vice President of the Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill moves forward as amended and will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk?
And, Mr. President, I ask to revoke Rule 12 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Got it. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please, actually, we have to go to roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Ramos. The ayes have it. The bill moves to third reading for advancement today. Next up, Madam Clerk, let's go to public safety. Please call in 385.
City Council Bill 23-0385, Study and Report, Baltimore City Climate Resilience Authority.
At this time, we'd like to recognize Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee had a hearing for this bill on July 19, 2023, and the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments are on the councilmembers' desks, and I move the committee amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments approved. Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill moves forward as amended. Chairman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. At this point, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Ramos. The ayes have it. The bill moves to third reading today. Next up, we're going to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Madam Clerk, please call in 354.
City Council Bill 23-0354, Administrative Procedure Act, Revisions.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on 23-0354 Administrative Procedure Act. The committee heard this bill on July 20, and there are amendments on your desks, and I move the amendments favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are passed. Mr. Chair?
I'd like to move this bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. Bills on third readings for same-day advancement. We will now turn, am I missing a bill?
Yep.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Trying to speed us up. Last bill, Madam Clerk, if you could please read it.
City Council Bill 23-0400, Port Covington Community Benefits District Amendment Boundaries.
Floor would like to recognize Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on this bill. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Now, we get to go to bills on third reading for same-day advancement. We'll turn, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to advance Council Bill 23-0400 from second to third reader during the same meeting on the same day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Without objection, we will invoke, is the motion on the floor? Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Ramos. The ayes have it. The bill will move forward today for third reading. And now, we turn to bills on third reading for final passage that require invocation of City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0412, City Property Renaming Playground at Hanlon Park After Ruby K Couch. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill?
City Council Bill 23-0385, Study and Report, Baltimore City Climate Resilience Authority. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0400, Port Covington Community Benefits District Amendment Boundaries. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is also approved. Now, we turn to bills on third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0250, the Councilmember Mary Pat Clark, Opportunity to Purchase Act.
The body would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. On my colleague's desk is a very small amendment. To just clarify, the intent of the bill is to make sure that the landlord is sending and working with the tenant before putting it on the market. So I move the amendment.
It's been moved. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor for adopting the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendment has now been adopted on third reading.
Mr. President, because in order to amend the bill, we'd have to wait for another meeting. I'm moving to suspend Rule 12-3 to vote on third reader same day.
I think we have to motion and second, and then we have to vote on it, I believe, before we vote on the bill.
Correct.
So it's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Yes. President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Ramos. So right now, we're in a posture of same-day advancement for this bill. At this time, the body would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos.
Move the bill favorable third reader.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry, we're in third reader, so we have to do roll call.
President Mosby, Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Ramos. The ayes have it. The bill will move forward today for third reading. And I want to thank all of our elders in the city of Baltimore. Our older adults are an absolute asset in our communities, yet too often, they are either seen as a problem to be solved or as just an oversight. And their voices matter. They are our wisdom keepers. They literally give us life. In many families in Baltimore, multi-generational families, they are taking care of not only their kids, but in some cases, grandkids. I know for me, my grandmother helped make me who I am, and I would not be here today without her. And so having an independent office outside of the Health Department that honors our elders, I think, is incredibly important. And I want to thank everyone for making this happen, and I'd love to pass it off to my colleague and partner in this work.
Thank you, Councilmen. And I just want to add, as a commissioner on the commission of aging, since my beginnings as a councilmember, I am also an older adult. And as you know, things have also started to change and evolve with the older adults of our city. And you hear I say older adults. We are trying to get away from the words senior, seasoned, those kind of words. We are older adults and a proud representative of the city for older adults on this commission. And I think it was back in 2011 is when there was an independent agency, and because of general funding and so on, that was taken away. And there's, we're just so excited that we are now going to have a director that's going to be a cabinet member with the mayor to be involved in those up-and-front decision-makings. Also, working to have people boots on the ground eventually, but we are going to, it's good that we're going to have a start with this. There's going to also be a name change. There's going to be added, a added person at every, not senior center anymore. We got to get out of the phrase of calling it senior center. These are centers for healthy aging, and because they do other things. They do intergenerational partnering and have activities at these, community activities at these centers. And it's just, these are places to bring everyone together to work with that older adult. So I thank the mayor for realizing that this, and his administration for realizing this change is needed, and looking forward to the mayor signing the bill so we can move this thing forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you could please go into the roll again.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, please call the last bill.
City Council Bill 23-0365, rezoning 601 through 621 East Biddle Street, 1101 through 1129 Fourth Street, and 602 East Chase Street and 1110 Nursery Place. President Mosby, McCray, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, please call the last bill.
City Council Bill 23-0365, rezoning 601 through 621 East Biddle Street, 1101 through 1129 Fourth Street, and 602 East Chase Street and 1110 Nursery Place. President Mosby, McCray, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. We will now turn to bills that have been withdrawn. Madam Clerk?
City Council.
City Council Bill 22-0324, zoning, conditional use parking, 4001 Roland Avenue.
Thank you for that. This bill has been withdrawn. We're going to go now to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee announce, if you have an announcement, please let us know. First, ECD, Madam Vice President? No?
Um, there we are.
Next up, Education, Workforce, Youth. Chairman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, October 12 at 10:00 a.m., City Property Renaming Reach Partnership After Former Senator Robert Dalton Stadium. That same day, at 10:01, there were Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on initiative, hiring initiatives for Spanish speakers, and both of these bills were at the request of Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we're going to go to Finance and Performance. Chairman Bullock, Northern Health, Environment, Technology, Chairwoman McCray, Northern Public Safety, Government Operations, Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting on September 27, 2023, to hear Bill 23-0182R, Hearing on the Regional Water Governance Task Force. It'll be at 1:00 p.m. here, of course. The committee will also be hearing LO 23-0041, Baltimore City Fire Department Operations, on September 20 and December 20 at 1:00 p.m. here. The committee finally will be hearing Bill 23-0180R, informational hearing, Summer 2023 Baltimore City Pool Closures, on Wednesday, August 23, 2023, at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Next up, Rules Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold an executive appointments hearing on Thursday, September 21 at 2023 at 5:00 p.m. for Richard J. Worley, Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department. We'll then hear EA 23-0209 at 6:30 p.m., and that is for James Wallace, Fire Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, right after that hearing on Thursday, September 21. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And then last, and certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, August 29 at 10:00 a.m. City Council Bill 22-0286, Sale of Property, South Side of Boston Street, Southwest Corner and South New Kirk Street, Block 6587, Lot 008A, and South Side Boston Street, Southeast Corner and South New Kirk Street, Block 6587A, Lot 016. On that same day, Tuesday, August 29, at 10:01 a.m., Ways and Means Committee will hold on Bill Number 23-0384 Sale of Property 14 to 18 Light Street, also known as 7 East Redwood Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Here, before we go into, um, regular announcements, we're just doing some house cleaning real quick. One second, please. It's, um, I recall that we did, but we're going to go back to City Council Bill 23-0400. Uh, the Executive Secretary is saying that we voted for same-day advancement, uh, to, uh, vote on third reading to be double-read, but we didn't, uh, voted out on third reader. That's not my recollection, but just in case, I'd rather be, uh, sorry, um, we're going to do that. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please call that bill and for everyone's edification, we're now reading this bill in for third reading in final passage.
City Council Bill 23-0400 Port Covington Community Benefits District Amendment Boundaries. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
And for the record, this bill is approved. Okay, now, we're going to go into regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements? Uh, Chairman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Uh, really quickly, uh, oftentimes, you'll see me, um, running out of here with my sons to attract meters to track practice. Um, but I do want to provide a little context. Um, some of you may be familiar with, uh, Ralph Durant, um, who established, uh, the Track and Field Program for Baltimore City Wreck-It Parks, passed away, uh, 20 years ago. Uh, but his legacy lives on, and to that extent, it's been renamed the Ralph Durant Academy. And so, you see young people from Baltimore who have been doing quite well.